2019, it is 3:03 PM. We're gonna start with our call to order, followed by the invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery Jr., and please silence your cellphones real quick.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord God, for your greatness. We thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your loving kindness that's better than life. We thank you, Father God, for a day that we have seen we never seen before, we'll never see again. We pray for those who are here. We pray for their family. We pray for those who may be sick among us. We ask you, Lord God, to help them, heal them, hold them. Father, we pray for direction in this meeting today. We thank you for those who are visiting. We thank you, Lord God, that you give them safe travel back to their homes of destination. Lord, we ask you to give us the direction that benefit those we serve. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, real call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Free?
He's good.
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present? Everybody's online now.
Excellent. All right, going to approve the minutes of the June 4th, 2019, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery. Please cast your vote theoretically. All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Counsel, we have one add-on for today. It's gonna be number 16 under new business, introducing ordinance declaring approximately 150 air packs that do not meet the current NFPA standard, surplus to the needs of the city, and donating same to war as Mexico for firefighting, and that's going to be a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Harvey. Cast your vote.
And now we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make the motion we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Darby. Please cast your vote. All right, our ceremonial matters and recognition of guests. We have Dave Smith with Norley on an invitation program and air show recap. And our recognition of guest, Senator Peacock, is all the way from the great.
I'm home.
You're home.
I was at Shreveport.
Come on up, Dave. I was squeezing that in while you were walking up there.
Okay, great. I don't wanna get in front of Senator.
Very efficient.
I'm David Smith. I'm the executive director for the Entrepreneurial Acceleration Program, a division of the BRF in Shreveport, 231 Kings Highway, Shreveport, Louisiana. And I really wanna update you on our Norley program, 'cause it definitely impacts Bossier City and Bossier Parish. EAP is a one-stop shop for a business accelerator. We are the only business accelerator in northwest Louisiana. Our goal is to help startup companies or existing businesses, existing businesses that really wanna grow, to help them launch. Our general rule of thumb is we wanna be able to move you forward in at least 60 to 90 days. If we can't, we're not a good fit for you. We'll link you up to the right agency that can help you. Well, our accelerator has been in operation for about five years, primarily focused the first four years in Caddo Parish, and I'll talk a little bit about that success. But what we did was, we went to the federal government, we went to the EDA and said, "Look, we're having all this demand in Caddo Parish. We believe there is a demand for entrepreneurial education and support across north Louisiana, focused on 21 parishes." You have my one pager, my information sheet, those parishes are listed there. So we went to them with a request for a grant. We were awarded that grant, a two-year grant, to extend our services across north Louisiana. It's a two-year grant, 1.2 million dollars that we can execute in support of entrepreneurs, just about any type. There is no limit for us for the type of technology that we can support. It's important for you to really meet the people that really do the work. I asked a couple of analysts to come with me. I've got Julie Gilli, the senior analyst. I've got Brett Brown, one of the analysts, my marketing guy, Matt Snyder, Brian Williams, and also with me is my daughter Jackie. She's a junior at Benton High School, okay? So what better way to see government in action than to come to this meeting? So, we're the group that really provides services to these entrepreneurs. In the first five years, what we have seen is we've screened over 800 different startups or existing businesses that need startup support. Most of those were not a good fit for us, but about 222 of those businesses were a good fit for us. We focus on high-growth, technology-based companies, primarily innovation or some game-changer in their industry. So if you're a good fit for us, we can help you. If you're not, we'll get you to the right organization. But what have we seen? We've seen a lot of oil and gas technology, we've seen transportation technology, we see goods and services, financial services, healthcare. We do see a lot of healthcare, and when we look at healthcare, it's everything from mobile, digital health records to new medical devices. We've also seen media, entertainment, but really focusing on that technology area. And I've seen, in the last four years, we've seen everything from pet products to IT, you know, enterprise solutions. So we have seen a lot. There's a, and the reason I tell you that is 'cause there's a lot of innovation out there and a lot of people looking for support. The impact, when you say so, what is the impact of what you've done, okay? Really and truly, we've started or provide services to 222, 66 of those have launched and are already in business. They've gotten investment, either angel investment, federal funding, bank loans, and a lot of them are just bootstrapping it. They're making it work themselves. We've generated to date over $74 million in investment in startup companies in northwest Louisiana. I think in 2020, we'll bust $100 million in investment in startup, technology-based startups in north Louisiana. They've generated 157 jobs, 39 part-time jobs, and 49 jobs that were outside Louisiana. And we're very particular, we want it all here in Louisiana, but they were in technical areas that we just could not recruit someone into Louisiana or we couldn't find someone in Louisiana. So they had to hire outside Louisiana. So why bring this to you? To date, okay, in the Norley program, we have had four businesses refer to us from Bossier Parish, from the Greater Bossier Economic Development Foundation. They've sent four our way. One of them is a portfolio company we're currently working with. So we're really here to say, hey, we're open for business. We're getting a high demand in other parishes. Monroe, you know, I've got four from Bossier, I've gotten over 17 from Washita Parish, about the same from Nakadish Parish. And to help us do that, we need you, when you're out in your constituency talking to people, we need you to know about EAP, Norley, and what we're doing. We've really focused a lot of our efforts on Bossier Parish. We do believe there's a lot of innovation here. Most recently, we hosted a student pitch competition at Bossier Parish Community College. Thirty-three student teams applied. Fifteen of those were selected to pitch, and we gave awards to the top three finishers, totaling about $1,000 in award money. And additionally, we gave every student that participated in that a $25 gift certificate to the bookstore. We had a great turnout. I think, Mayor, you were there, there were over 150 people that came to that award ceremony. And with that award ceremony, we actually had five portfolio companies present, all technology companies, all north Louisiana companies. We had a cyber company there, we had a couple of IT companies, we even had the Red River Range, the state-of-the-art indoor range guy, come and present. We partnered with the 307th Bomb Wing. They helped us judge, gave us some great feedback on that. And from there, we took our entire team and we participated in the airshow, the most technical event, really and truly, when you look at, you know, how technical the Air Force is, the largest technology event in the region. We went there, we brought our launch rocket, and we had an overwhelming turnout to get pictures made in our launch rocket. Great turnout from that perspective. Really, in closing, I just wanted an opportunity to present the Norley to you, let you know what we do. If you do have an opportunity to refer one, someone to us, our contact information is on the one-sheeter. I put my card on the one-sheeter for you. We've got a couple of years in this program, and we're really about businesses launching in north Louisiana. That's pretty much my update. Any questions?
Outstanding. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our committee reports. Stacy Fernandez, our finance director, with her monthly financial report.
Good afternoon, counsel. I've distributed the financial reports for May 2019. On page one, our revenue to budget is 110%. For the general fund, it's 101%. Page two are our expenses by fund, and we're at 94%. Page three are our sales tax. The second section is our year-to-date, and we've recovered some ground there. We're at 1.4% below prior year, year-to-date. Page four is our manning report. We're at 684 employees compared to 685 last month, and we're 17 below budget. Finally, on page five, our water and sewer report. For the current month, we're at 37%. For year-to-date, we're at 48. To budget, we're 2,068 better. And rolling 12 months, which is the most accurate, is 133%. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Mark Hudson, our city engineer, with his monthly Shed Road project report.
Counsel, tomorrow, all the barricades will be moved from one side of Shed Road to the other. Change of scenery, at least.
Is that what they call musical chairs?
Musical barricades, yes, sir. The good news is it gets all the barricades to the other side of the street from the restaurant, Tony Forrest Casio's restaurant. So things will be better for him there. The last couple of weeks, DOTD's been taking core samples of the pavement, 35 cores they drilled in the pavement to make sure it was thick enough. That effort's completed, I believe, today. Like I just said, the barricades will be flipped over to the other side of the street tomorrow. We have one more lane to grind. It took five days per lane, so let's assume another five days of grinding, and then we get stripes. For months, I've been telling you, so many workdays left to go, and I just described to you about 10 more workdays left to go. I have no idea when the heck that work will be accomplished.
Mark, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And we talked a little bit about it. You know, we had one guy out there working Thursday, last Thursday, one guy yesterday, one guy today. Do they have any more subcontractors? I mean, is this one guy gonna move all the barricades, move all the cones, and take him two or three days to do that? Where are there other people to help him do these cores, do the sealant, which is done, I know, but, you know, we have a project coordinator out there.
I asked the same.
Can he muscle up some work tomorrow?
I've asked the same question. Why do you only have one crew sealing cracks? The answer is, we only have one crack sealing machine. I would assume the answer would be the same for the core drilling. The barricades, I think, starting tomorrow, the barricades is pretty much a non-skilled operation, and I would think that would all happen fairly quickly with more workers than what we've seen in the past.
You think we'll have more workers tomorrow?
Well, let's hope so.
How about the guy that drives the grinding machine? Is he in town or out of town, or do we know?
He's supposed to be back Monday. I hear, although he doesn't live here, he's from out of town, I'm not sure where, but he's supposed to be back Monday. Keep your fingers crossed that it works out that way. Viking Drive, our plans are virtually complete. Our right-of-way maps are gonna be finished by the end of this month, in about two weeks. Those will be sent down to Baton Rouge for review and approval. We'll get those back, and I suspect DOTD will give us the green light to start acquiring the properties. We'll get with our consultant to accomplish all of those acquisitions. Coleman Street, tomorrow, we're having our plan-in-hand meeting. That's when the folks from Baton Rouge come up, we go over the plans, and we walk from one end of Coleman Street to the other. I look forward to showing them the beautiful Fort Smith Park that they've had so many issues with.
Mark, when do you think that's gonna start? Do you have an idea? 'Cause Principal asked me about that the other day.
Yeah, well, it's another 2080 thing, just like Shed Road. So that's gonna move slower with federal money involved, but after the plan-in-hand tomorrow, I hope they will let us move on to the right-of-way portion of the project when we start creating right-of-way maps and step out from there. I would expect, with the way things move, you know, we're probably nine months away from bidding Coleman Street. Innovation Drive, we're killing it out there, 100% city money. Things go quicker. We're laying water from the east and sewer from the west, all the right-of-ways cleared. We've got a great contractor, and they make good progress every day. The Walter Bigby Phase 1, the Highway 80 portion of the parkway, we're killing it out there, too. We encounter problems every single day, and we solve them, and we move on. Brace yourself for a pretty good change order with the water main. We've crossed seven different streets in this old part of town, and at every intersection, we've uncovered water mains nobody ever knew was there. So lots of change orders, but we'll get it done. The bigger Walter Bigby Carriage Way project is moving along pretty good exercise. Once that's done, guys, it's pretty much downhill as far as having a complete set of plans. Well, I've already talked into SWEPCO about initiating their relocations, which are significant, but I think they may be able to get started sooner rather than later, so that's a good thing. Our stripes on the parkway and on Swan Lake Road are complete. I think they look real good, and we're moving on to the next project. We bid it a few months ago, but now's the best time to do striping. We're gonna stripe another 12 streets. Swan Lake Road, I-220 lane additions, you know, we're gonna change order in some improvements to the ongoing project that the parish has ongoing right now. Visited with our consultant last week, and he's making good progress, and tells me he'll be finished with his plans in about a month. Then those will need to go to Baton Rouge for review and approval, but hopefully shortly thereafter, we can just hand those plans over to the contractor and change order it into the project that's underway right now.
So Best Jet will continue that and take care of everything?
Yes, sir.
Power portion of?
Yes, sir. It'll be one giant change order that we're gonna pay for. We had, you guys appropriated a million and a half bucks with an ordinance a few weeks ago. Our consultant tells me he thinks that's plenty enough money. I have a layout of that up in my office, if you guys are interested in seeing it.
Does any of that include signalizing?
No.
No signal.
No.
Would you mind distributing that, please, to account, if you could send that to Phyllis?
The map?
Yeah, I mean, can you condense it, or is it something we have to physically come up there and see?
I'll pull it off. It's great big, it's hanging on my wall, but I'm gonna get you a copy that you can hold in your hand.
Well, no, I mean, I can make the trip, it's good.
Okay, well.
I like traveling City Hall every now and then.
Come on up. It's hanging on my wall, and we can look at it.
Shed Road hanging on your wall, too?
Shed Road was hanging on the wall, but it got so old, it fell off the wall. Arena Projects, we're gonna begin the new roof July 1st at the arena. Terry's Roofing gave us a great price to do that. Turns out, they're the guys that put the roof on the arena 20 years ago. It's gonna take them about 90 days. The Kroger Walmart connection, everybody thinks that's a good idea, most people think it's a good idea, including the managers of the two stores, but I got an email from Kroger corporate headquarters, and they tell me no way do they wanna connect those two parking lots together. So we've hired David Volantine and Rob Russell, both two appraisers, to do their independent appraisals in preparation and expectation of having to expropriate the two little tracts of land to build the driveways.
And those would be the tracts near Panda Express and down toward the front of the stores?
Yes, sir.
Those two?
There's two locations.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
If Kroger corporate is saying no, and we have to initiate expropriation, and then we get into a legal battle, is that really what we wanna do? I mean, I'm just saying, we ought to think about this, you know? We're building the Melrose extension, correct? So that will certainly solve the problem that people can get back to plantation. I'm just saying that, you know, before we get into a war with a big corporation, I think Kroger's pretty good-sized.
Yes, sir.
Especially considering our resources. Not to say that we wouldn't prevail, but...
Well, it'd be worth another discussion.
I just think that, Mayor, that we ought to, you know, when the city attorney returns, that we ought to sit down and figure out a game plan and determine, you know, the actual cost-benefit ratio of that decision to go forward, so.
Yeah, Melrose is gonna be great, but one advantage of the two driveways is it...
I'm not arguing the merits, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
All I'm saying is, we take that into account, and do we wanna take on Kroger corporate? That's all.
Got it. The Tinsley Ballfields, plans are essentially complete. We're meeting Thursday. Councilman Williams, you've always wanted to come, go over those plans, and usually you're not available on Wednesdays when we meet, but we're meeting Thursday at 10:30, so you might wanna come.
Where?
Out at Parks and Recreation. Our plans are essentially done, but we've got wetlands back there, and we're going through that process now. It's clipping along pretty quickly, faster than what I think Innovation Drive did for some reason, but we're still gonna have some wetlands to mitigate, so that'll take a little while before we can begin construction. Those ballfields are gonna be second to none. And lastly, Councilman Irwin, I think you've asked me before about the railroad crossing at Robert E. Lee.
Right.
Kansas City Southern's gonna come replace that in three to four weeks.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, counsel. If you have any questions.
Mr. Hudson, how's the lights on Northgate Road?
I've sent AEP SWEPCO a check for about $44,000 bucks to install those lights, so I'll check on that for you, and they've been ordered, we've done everything we're supposed to do, and someday soon, they'll show up and install them, but I'll get you a better answer than that. Thanks, counsel.
All right, unfinished business?
I see.
You got one more?
I do.
Very important, the most important.
Good afternoon, members, and thank you for allowing me to give you a quick overview from the recently ended special, regular session. Wanted to say special since we're usually in special session, but fortunately, we had one session this year. It was a fiscal session in nature, so it was very limited in scope of what we could legislate and discuss. It is an election year, and typically, on the fourth year of the governor's term and the legislature's term, they're ready to get back in the district campaign and rerun for office. So I have to say, it was a welcome change this year, given the fact we were in four last year and three the year before, so, but a lot of good things came out this session. The biggest surprise of the session was the transportation bill, House Bill 578, that came out. The bill was initially filed to allocate some of the BP settlement funds from the 2010 Macondah explosion to infrastructure projects along the coast. It morphed into a statewide transportation bill that I think is good news for our state in general. Our delegation with Senator Peacock and others, in fact, all of our senators had the amendment. We originally had the Jimmy Davis Bridge in the bill, but they decided to put the I-49 interconnect through the city of Shreveport to complete the I-49 North, and then the capital outlay bill has the Jimmy Davis Bridge money in it, and I'll get to that next. But one thing I wanna note, Senator Peacock and I have talked about this recently, the $700 million, with the exception of three projects on there, is merely match funding. We were talking about the 80/20 earlier for federal funds, once the federal government comes through with that. So this is a long-term project with this money being allocated that way, and hopefully that we'll move forward. The same author had House Bill 575. This was the Uber-Lift bill. I think, if you recall, the city has adopted an ordinance several years ago. We were able to grandfather our ordinance in. I've asked the city attorney to look at our ordinance compared to this new regulatory framework to see if, in fact, we do need to amend it, but it will be a regulatory process at the state level, but allow us to keep our fees at the local level that you've enacted through ordinance. There may be some minor tweaks, I know he was gonna look at that upon his return. I gave you a general overview this year on what happened kinda with the state in general and what didn't happen. There was a lot of talk about the industrial tax exemption program. I know we've got a system in Bossier where we have a committee that vets it, priority coming to you, it works well. Nothing passed, and the governor's ordinance will stand, our process will stand currently until he would change his, I mean, his executive order. There was also an effort to centralize the collection of state and local taxes. I know you hear a lot about that, which would mean the state would collect our taxes. That bill did not move forward either. I'm gonna move into some things that passed of interest to us. House Bill 2 is always the state's capital outlay bill. We got the Highway 71 lighting project back with the help of our delegation. If you recall, the governor did veto it last year. The bill has not been signed, and he does have line item veto, so I like to say everything in my report is contingent upon him disposing of things on his desk, and I'll provide an update once I know what he does with that project. But we are gonna continue to add it until we hopefully can get it one year. We were very successful in getting more money for the LTRI building. Priority one in the program is cash, which we have $6 million, and priority five is non-cash, which we have $15 million. I think, you know, our goal, just in talking with the mayor, the administration, the parish, CIC, would be to move all the money to cash position to where we could let the contract for the building out at the Cyber Innovation Park. The Jimmy Davis Bridge money is also in there, we're in a good position. This is for rehabilitation and lighting. And again, Senator Peacock reminds me, we have language in the bill that would allow for that money to be a match if and when federal funds ever become available for a new bridge. So that would be, again... So that would be again an 80/20 share. We're in a good position with cash and non-cash on the Jimmy Davis Bridge. This year, House Bill 1 was not filed, and I think if you recall, every year I come before you to talk about the state's budget. The governor and his revenue estimating conference did not agree with the revenue projections of the House of Representatives, so we didn't get a budget from the administration this year. So the chairman of the appropriations committee filed the bill and they moved that bill as the state's budget bill. So if you hear House Bill 105, it is the governor's, well, the state's budget this year. And we have sales tax dedications that come back to us in two forms and that money was in the bill when it passed. So that was a good thing because they're always scrutinized. From an internet sales tax collection, I know you hear a lot about that. There was a recent Supreme Court decision that said, yes, in fact, internet companies do owe money regardless if they have a nexus in your state or not. The state has done a great job of putting statutes in place contingent upon that decision. So what we did this year was we went back in and cleaned up that contingency language, made it mandatory, and by July 1st, 2020, the state needs to collect its 4.45 cent sales tax and whatever our area is. And remit to the city, we remit to our jurisdictions. Right now, the state's only collecting 4% regardless of what our local rate is. So this will put in place whatever our exact rates are here and remit that back to our CFO for remittance to every other sales tax jurisdiction. So, you know, I'm anxious to see, I met with the CFO before meeting, just to look at last year and maybe this year and start getting where those numbers, I see them already decline at the state level, but what that will do for Bossier City. Senator Peacock filed a bill to increase our investment options for the Bossier City Police Pension Fund, further stabilizing the fund, so I publicly want to thank him for handling that this year for us. He also had a bill. He was busy this year. The governor had a cyber technology package of bills and I always think that it's good for our area. It shores up our efforts at the CIC. And the governor currently chairs the National Governors Association Cyber Technology Task Force. So if you recall, he had his conference up here. He had the package of bills. Two criminalized activities of stealing data, but Senator Peacock had one to encourage businesses to share when in fact they know of cyber threats so that the state can address it. And this is becoming a big issue, as you know, with all the new technology on the market. One bill passed, and I spoke with the mayor earlier and the city attorney. I don't think we have this issue yet in Bossier City, but it's coming because I've seen it in Lafayette and other smaller communities even. But there's a company that has low-speed scooters that drops them off, ties them up to a pole. You scan your, an app, and you can take it for a ride and hook it up to something else. It became a huge problem in Lafayette. And in fact, tonight at their council meeting, I'm kind of following other jurisdictions, they're adopting a ban until they come up with a model ordinance. So I told the city attorney, maybe when they adopt it, you can kind of look ahead if that ever happens here. They're gonna designate drop-off points where you can ride. I mean, they were on the streets, the sidewalks, the parks. So, yeah, I was just, I wanted to see if you had them and the mayor said he had not heard of that yet, but it's coming, I think. In general, there's a couple of study committees that will participate in. They're looking at increasing the contract limit for public works, which I think would be a good thing for the cities on the bidding of those contracts. And I listed some other things of interest in there, too. And what didn't pass, there were no reforms to the capital outlay program. I think you hear me every year talk about efforts to use the unclaimed fund money at the state treasury to create a revolving loan fund. That did not pass. There was also a bill to allow local governments to establish their own minimum wage. That did not pass. And there were a host of others. One thing I did leave out, I do want to mention, given the gaming industry support in our community, sports betting did not pass, and that was a big issue for our riverboat industry. And fantasy sports, if you recall, passed on the ballot in '47 parishes last year, Bossier being one. The regulations and taxation did not pass either, so until that happens, we won't see either in the state. And you can't do that in a regular session year, so it wouldn't happen till 2021. In closing, it's election year. I'll be preparing an elections report after qualifying ends on August the 8th. We're losing 31 house members, 16 senators. We just got 12 new in February, and that's a lot of new folks. In our area, we are losing Carmody, Morris. I'm not sure who's gonna get opposition. I'm not sure who may not run. But the turnover has been incredible. It's been good. A lot of new ideas, new faces. But it is a learning process for those who come in and who don't know what you do, what I do, and what a lot of other people do. So I'm gonna just keep you abreast on who's running, who's not, and where we're going. And I want to thank all of you. I sometimes take your staff away just for analysis of legislation, but I appreciate their feedback. It helps lead us with our delegation. And I publicly want to thank our legislative delegation for all they do. It takes a lot of eyes and ears to keep up with everything going on in Bossier City, and thanks to each one of you. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
I just had one quick question on the internet or the sports fantasy gambling bill. Would that have benefited the local municipalities in any way?
Well, in the sports betting, it would have been, those are two separate things. Fantasy sports is on an app evidently.
So then the actual sports, real sport?
There was no effort to tax that because that is, I don't know if the state, the other state did have a tax on it and that failed. Sports betting, that's gonna be something we'd have to negotiate. First of all, it's gotta go to the voters. Bossier would have to say yes because it's a new form of gaming, and that was what this bill did. Then it has to go back to the state for regulatory tax rate and whether or not. I will tell you, the author this year was against locals getting money. And there was one author on the House side that was for us getting money. So it battled out to the last minute and the bill ultimately failed. Mississippi, just, and I can get you numbers, only saw a $1.7 million statewide increase the first year, which I thought was low. So I'll look at that and kind of, if we want to go after that in one year, that would be something we could consider to get a local, like our boarding fee we do here, as you know, the percentage.
It'll be interesting to see how that progresses in Mississippi.
It was only gonna be allowed at our riverboats, horse track facilities, and then video poker ultimately defeated the bill because they won it at every video poker establishment. And if I misspoke, okay. So there was an infighting among the different gaming entities that ultimately killed it. Had it got to a point, then I'd have said, let's get to the table and figure out if there's an opportunity once our voters approve it, but we'll have to do that in a fiscal year where we could set up a bill just for Bossier City.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Senator Peacock, would you like to say anything?
I think it's Senator.
It's up to you. Appreciate you coming today. Yes?
I would like to thank you for, I know you hired Ginger and she does a great job. And she's a resource when there are items that come up involving Bossier. I will contact her because she seems to have a quicker contact to everybody. So Mayor Walker, thank you, and this council for making that investment. I think you're very well served and the citizens of Bossier are well served by having her represent not only the city but the parish, and that shows that this, we work together here. So thank y'all for what you do.
Thanks, Senator.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, since it's coming up six months, Mr. Roshenbach, would you please? On behalf of the council, with the council's approval, I'd like to request that you, after six months, you give us an update.
Sure.
You know, it's the water and sewer, where we stand financially, you know, with the various large projects we've got going on and so forth, so similar that we do monthly with the other directors.
I'll get with.
Sometime around end of June or whenever you get the financial. When does that normally? Would we have the financials for the June 30th? Okay, somewhere towards the end of July, then.
Get it done.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $2 million from the 2017 tax revenue bond. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Just keep doing that every other time you are.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to remove built-up debris from the raw water intake for a total of $25,000 to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Montgomery. Any questions from the audience on this ordinance? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached municipal advisor engagement letter with Argent Advisors, Inc. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
New business witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-13, South Hardwick Drive Reconstruction.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $210,000 and the approved budget is $225,000. There are no addendums. The first bid is from Three Gen Construction. The bid bond is included. It's for $198,579. 198-579.00. The next bid is from A&amp;H Building and Construction LLC. The bid bond is included. The bid is for $186,533. 186-533.00. The next bid is from CW&amp;W Contractors, Inc. The bid bond is included. The bid is for $227,700. 227-700.00. And the last bid is from RVP Construction, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for $181,997. 181-997.00. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids?
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P, I'm sorry, bid number 19-107, 1741 School Street Demolition.
Counsel, this demolition was approved at the April 16th meeting. There was one addendum which provided questions and answers and a list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting. The first bid is from Three Gen Construction. The bid bond is included. It's for $10,200. 10200.00. And the last bid is from Sims. The bid bond is included. It's for $6,448. 6448.00. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Hamilton Road Drainage Lift Station Improvement Project for a total of $1,320,000 to come from the 2014 utility bond issue. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Shady Grove and Lynn Street Lift Station Improvement Project for a total of $170,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund and enter into a contract with Pulli Construction, Inc. for completion of work. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance implementing a budgetary control requiring a resolution to be approved by the Bossier City Council prior to the hiring or employment of any individual receiving wages, compensation, or remuneration for labor, including temporary or contractual employment. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Are there questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing engagement of an employment service for the hiring of a temporary contract employee for the part-time position of the Bossier City Civic Center. First and final reading?
So moved. Second. I'd like to speak on this.
Yes, sir.
If I could have a minute, I would recommend, and I spoke to the mayor prior to this meeting, that we do not vote in favor of these employees, given the fact that we're looking at all different possible avenues. Mayor, is that correct?
Correct.
So I would ask that you vote nay on hiring these employees right now until we determine the direction that the Civic Center's gonna go.
What alternative works in the meantime? Just things stay as they are?
Yes.
Which is?
I'm sorry, I missed a question.
Well, this is, so this was going to replace?
To replace employees.
If we're not gonna do this, then how does it work? Just curious.
This was to replace employees that are either resigning, resigning, whatever, just to keep our staff at a certain level. And then the issue of what kind of management we were gonna do with the Civic Center became a factor and until we resolve that and appears we'll have suggestions from y'all in about a week or so how to proceed on that.
Okay, got you.
That it?
So this, so this was to?
Hire.
Hire the employment service, right, not the employees?
We were gonna get a temporary hire, a request, permission to do a temporary hire while we resolve the bigger issue of how we're gonna manage the Civic Center in the future.
Right. Does this fall under professional service or not?
I don't know. Anybody know? I don't know. I'd give an answer for you, Mr. Doherty.
All right, any questions from the audience? Any additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adam Phil. Adopt a resolution authorizing the engagement of an employment service for the hiring of a temporary contract employee for the position of office event manager for the Bossier City Civic Center. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams.
I would echo my comments from the first resolution in that we vote against this until we determine which direction we're headed.
All right, questions from the audience? Any additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adam was defeated. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of four fire department line employees to replace positions due to retirement, first and final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Darby. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer and one jailer for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Larkins or Mr. Montgomery?
I'll say.
Who's first?
I had Mr. Montgomery for first.
David, Mr. Montgomery first. Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one for the sewer subbase in B.C. 10 Phase 1 project for an increase of $359,106.94. Total cost of contract with increase $1,018,096.14.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? From the council? Cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one for the sewer subbase in B.C. 10 Phase 2 project for an increase of $120,823.33. Total cost of contract with increase $411,613.13.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Elect a vice president for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Councilman David Montgomery.
Just one?
All right.
Does that need a second? A second?
So first, nominated Councilman Montgomery for vice president from Councilman Williams, and second by Councilman Harvey. Yeah, are there any other nominations from the council? Hearing none?
I move we close the nominations.
Nomination's closed.
Is it not up?
No, mine's up.
Mine's up.
It did not come up for you, Mr. Irwin, to vote?
About it?
Mr. Harvey?
Or whatever.
All right.
I never heard vote.
I don't think he said it. Elect a president for fiscal year 2019, 2020?
Like to make the motion that we nominate Councilman Scott Irwin from District 1 for our next president? Second.
Any additional nominations? All right, we have a nominated by Councilman Montgomery, seconded by Councilman Williams, Scott Irwin for president for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Nomination's and send for votes. Close nominations and send for?
Yeah, I move we close the nominations, I'm sorry.
All right, cast your vote.
Mr. Larkin, did yours pop up? Thank you. Approved report of final change order for Chiller, number one, replacement and increase of $7,850. Total cost of contract with change order is $250,550.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
And then lastly, introduce an ordinance declaring approximately 150 air packs that do not meet the current NFPA standard surplus to the needs of the city and donating same to Juarez, Mexico for firefighting, first reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Harvey. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Chief, when you going to Juarez?
To get across the border through their customs and all that, so after that.
Are you going back then?
Yes, sir. It's pretty cool, I want to try to bring some firefighters this time, let them see what it's like over there.
Yeah.
The neat thing about it, they have the exact same size fire department as us, with nine stations, and we service 70,000 people, they service 1.5 million or more, so it's pretty cool.
Even strengthened.
I try. The language varies a little bit.
You coming back?
I had something.
Yes, sir.
Tinder, I wanted just to ask you, I mean, I got to thinking, you know, ahead, and Mayor, if in court we have an MPC meeting, I mean, a member here as well, Mr. Roshnback, to get ahead of this scooter situation, you know, rather than reacting, I mean, what do you think about us having a moratorium before they get here?
Yes, I'll pull Lafayette's ordinance tonight and maybe send that to Jimmy or to Mr. Mosley and, I'm sorry, Mr. Hall.
And the mayor, and?
Yes.
Get ahead of it so that it doesn't ever start until we can manage it, you know?
It's crazy, I've seen it.
Because it's a lot harder to get rid of them.
Well, you see in Atlanta, New York, just when I've traveled for conferences, I know what they talking about, well, I go to Lafayette for legislative visits, and they're literally tied up to anything, and can you imagine a main thoroughfare having these scooters or on the, so let me, yeah, I know Mayor, well, Joel Brobado is city parish president, I will get whatever they adopt tonight, send it to the city attorney. Now, they've hired an outside consultant, is why I just thought, I told Mr. Hall, why don't we wait and let them do some of the legwork, draft their ordinance, and we can adopt that?
Oh, they don't already have one.
Mm-mm. What happened is there was no state law governing low-speed scooters, so when the city, or I'm sorry, the city parish went to enforce it, they really had no standing. So we had to file a bill at the state level to say that this was enforceable at the parish or city level. So in order to make sure these scooters aren't running around Lafayette, they're banning them until they get their ordinance in place, because otherwise, it's bird and lime, and they're still hooked up all over.
That's what I'm saying, we can go ahead and do that.
Yes.
So that they never get here.
Sure.
Or if they do, they're just, they're illegal, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Not go ahead, just go ahead and say, we're not going to have this until we figure it out.
Yes, let me, let me get the ordinance, shoot it to the city attorney, and that'd be a good idea.
Probably don't even need to have it, I tell you, I don't know if the mayor's been in the Philippines, I was there, and them dudes, no, they're all over the place, we don't need those things.
Where was this, Mr. Hall?
In the Philippines, it's, you know, but these scooters a little bit different, but I'm sure the driving's going to be the same. I mean, you just hold on for your life.
It's the future, I mean, one thing we're seeing, and I tell the city attorney this, is this new form of transportation, whether it be transportation networks, ride sharing, scooters, it's similar, I guess when we had the wave of taxis or buses, I don't know, but we're going to have to regulate it, or it's going to regulate us, so I will follow up on that.
Thank you, Mr. Phil.
Mayor, you have anything for us today?
No, thank you, just congratulations to you, new leadership.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I do want to commend Mr. Free, you know, I don't know if he's kind of nervous going into it the first time, being a president, but I think he's done a heck of a job, I really do, I'm serious when I tell you that, even though I play with you too much, but I'm serious.
Mr. Montgomery, you got anything?
Oh.
Congratulations, Scott.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.